All right, good every- good evening everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:02. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is very exciting to see such a full room of people, so very excited about that. First, is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And tonight, we approved four homeschooling requests, four zero, oh sorry, five zero. And we approved another homeschooling request, four one. Next on the agenda is our showcase. So Dr. Cummings, if you can do some introductions.
Terrific, thank you. So I am so pleased to introduce the committee to our new faculty and staff. So each of them is bringing incredible talents to our school system. So we have a very rigorous interview process. We have hundreds and hundreds of applicants, and each one of the people that was selected went through that rigorous interview process. So what I'm going to do is ask each principal to come up and introduce the new staff that they have. So why don't we begin with our elementary school? And I'm going to ask Lisa to come up and introduce the staff that are new to Narragansett Elementary.
Hello. Do you want them to come up or just stand or?
They don't have to say anything, but they can come up so we can see their face and say hello.
Great. All righty, just want to make sure they get recognized. So with us tonight, we have Jenna Carlson. She's our new school psychologist for this school year. Jenna, she's hit the ground running. It's been great to have her. We have Leev Scott, our P-, uh, she's sorry, our health and wellness teacher. We have Hannah Finer, who's a teaching assistant working with preschool. And I'm not sure, Stephanie, Stephanie Colbo. Nope, she was gonna come. She's a mom in our school, but she's also a brand-new preschool teaching assistant as well. We have a couple other people that couldn't make it tonight, that our new school nurse, Colleen McCarthy, who's been joining me every night for the last six nights for back-to-school nights. So I left and she was still there. And Mary Perkins, who's also a teaching assistant as well. We have Gianna Carroll and Emma Stokes, also teaching assistants that joined us this year. So we've been very busy with some great new staff and some new blood here at our school. Very happy to have them all.
Great, thank you. Well done. Next, I would like to invite up Mrs. Chardier to introduce our new peer school staff.
Good evening. I have three new staff members with some short introductions that I'd kind of like to go through. So please welcome Heidi O'Donnell. Heidi, thank you. Sorry. Heidi hails from Western Connecticut and attended Holy Cross where she majored in chemistry. After five years working in the pharmaceutical industries in Boston, she decided to follow her passion for teaching. She transitioned from the private sector to earn a master's at Leslie University. Over the last 12 years, Heidi has taught middle and high school in Boston area, and they eventually landed in South County. She resides with her husband, husband, Safair, and their son, Ali, and their beloved pug, Bernie. So welcome Heidi. Next, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Moran. Jennifer is the new secretary at peer. So for over the last four years, you might have recognized Jen's face or heard her voice at central office where she's worked part-time as an administrative assistant. She's thrilled to join the peer school family. She also is in South County with her husband, Patrick. Her daughters Jane and Stella. She enjoys local restaurants, especially Restaurant Week, and loves traveling to new destinations like Aruba and New York City. So welcome Jen. And last, but certainly not least, we've got a face that you're probably very familiar with, Ryan Canisette. Ryan is moving into the deanship. He has 28 years of experience with 26 specializing in fifth and sixth grade. He has a master's degree in administration, and he has done a lot of different roles here in Narragansett. Not only has he served on various committees such as capital improvement, digital equity, curriculum academies, and so forth, he has been a part of our athletic crew and has coached soccer for over two decades. So Ryan is also the proud father of two. Brooke, currently a sophomore at Brown, and Ryan Jr., a junior at North Kingstown. It says a junior, right? Junior, junior? Okay, yes. So his wife, Colleen, is also in education teaching at West Kingston, grade five. So welcome, Ryan.
Next, I'd like to welcome up Mr. Fiore, who will let us know about the new staff at the high school.
Good evening, everyone. Off to a great school year start, and we have a couple of new employees with us here today. Marisol Kinnipur is in our world language department. She teaches Spanish. She's actually a familiar face from last year. She started with us mid-year last year, and she's continuing us, continuing with us again this year. And Yannika Young is in our counseling office. She's one of our school counselors. She had some extended experience in Connecticut, and then comes by the way of Cheraho. So we'd like to welcome both of them to the district. Unfortunately, a few other members could not make it tonight. Wendy McCardle is in world language. Mia Pulia is in English. Ted Stevenson in English. And Alyssa Walsh is part of our Harbor program that she's taking over this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to welcome Dr. Denton, who can introduce our new special services staff.
Good evening. So we've talked before that the Office of Student Services is far more than special education. And so tonight, I have the honor of introducing you to Simone Butterworth, who is our multilingual learner teacher. Simone actually joined us in January, but has accepted the position and now is fully on staff. And we're so excited to have her because she brings such expertise but passion for this population. And she has really done more than just provide services to our students. She's working so closely with our families and our staff and our administration to make sure that all students are fully engaged in learning. So I welcome you, Simone. If you call my office in the next couple of weeks, there'll be a new voice. Tracy Duffin, I think she's worked for the district for 29 years. She is retiring as of October 1st. Insha Man Spargo, who was at the middle school, is now coming to the Office of Student Service as our assistant. And so we're excited about that. And we're also excited, another familiar or new face to us that I hope becomes familiar is Delicia DiMarcio. She is our new community health worker through our Thunder Miss grant, which has been extended for two years. So she'll be at both our middle school and our high school. Thank you.
So I'd like to do a sincere welcome to all of our staff. We really know it's a very, very rigorous process that brought you here today. You bring a wealth of experience, and we're really happy, and we're especially happy that you took the time to come tonight. That means a lot to us to match that person with the print, and we really appreciate you taking the time to do that. With that being said, we're gonna do a very quick two-minute recess. Please stay if you would like to stay, but some of you are here with your family. If you'd like to get back and plan and prepare for tomorrow, we won't be offended either. So we're gonna do a two-minute recess just in case, people that brought their family, if they want to dash out, totally fine. But we're gonna be right back with our meeting in two minutes. All right, we are back. What I would like to propose to the committee is, if you are interested, I'd like to do a swap. What I would really like to do next is to do oral reports and have the superintendent welcome the sixth person that's on our stage, so people understand that. And then, I would love for the superintendent to give his report as well, and then do open forum. So, I'd like to make a motion to move in the agenda and have oral report item number one, and then item number four, and then have open forum, and then resume the meeting exactly as it is. So, that's my motion.
I can second that emotion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Or move the motion, and you second it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'll move it, you can second it.
Okay, I'll second it. You move it, I'll second it.
That's fine.
Okay. Any discussion before we take a vote on that?
Yes. I mean, we're here to serve the public. There's a lot of public people here about a very important issue. We're here for them. I think the staff here understands that. I'm sure Peter here understands that, and I'm sure our new student representative understands that, who's so excited to be here.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm seeing people with Little League hats on and such. I would say I think we should stick to the regular schedule, do open forum, and how the meetings usually run.
And the only reason I propose that is to serve the public, because I did get an email today that people were very interested in the topic that's under the superintendent's report. So, my suggestion is to be helpful, because I know that are interested in the superintendent's report. So, that was— that's why I'm proposing that.
And I think under the unique circumstances, and I do completely understand that if there are other things that people have got going on, they want to move, like, say what they need to say and move on. But the unique consideration that we're making here is it allows the superintendent to deliver his report, and for anyone that could come up afterwards during open forum, the opportunity to be able to ask questions. We wouldn't be able to answer them directly at that moment, but it would allow us later on, when we give our reports, to be able to engage in answering those questions.
We have children here that are here to advocate for themselves and for their peers, and it is 7:40. We are here to serve the children of this community. I advocate that we stick to the order in which most meetings all are stuck to, so that the people who we serve here, the residents and the children, can get home at a good hour, finish their homework, and then we can resume regular business.
Peter, how long would you say your report is roughly?
So, you know what? I'm going to just pull my motion. I was trying to be helpful. If it's going to be more helpful to keep it, I don't have any problem with that, Jen. I'm not trying to— I was trying to be helpful. No problem. All right, so I'm withdrawing my motion. All right, so, it is now time for open forum. This is a time that is a— an open forum of no more than 30 minutes. Three minutes per speaker will be offered at the beginning of each month's regularly scheduled meeting. School committee will permit people to ask questions or make comments relating to items both not on the agenda and items on the agenda. It's understood that the school committee members will just hear from the public during open forum, and they will be unable to respond in any collective voice to comments. Questions and comments will be permitted during the time the school committee is conducting business. Such questions and comments must be germane to the issue being discussed. Such questions and comments will only be permitted when an official motion is being discussed and deliberated. Such comments and questions will only be allowed after all the school committee members have had an opportunity to ask questions and make comments concerning the motion under discussion. People giving reports should only be questioned by the school committee and not by the people in attendance. So, with that, it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? So, one at a time, just come forward and say your name, unless you're a group. I don't— if you're together, then just introduce both of yourself.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zach Sarowich. I'm one of the agri-science teachers at the high school.
And I'm Abby Smith. I'm your Narragansett FA president this year.
We wanted to stand before you today and ask permission for us to go and attend the— was it year 54?
Uh, 98.
Oh, 98. New to the ag world. The 98th National Convention in Indianapolis. This will be held October 21st to the 26th. We would like to bring 10 students and five adults. The students will be competing in a variety of competitions. Do you want to share some of them?
Yeah, we have a group this year, a couple of them are— one of them are focusing on ag sales, so that's real-world application of agricultural communication skills. And then, we have a dairy team, as well as a dairy showmanship person going. So, really just a whole bunch of different things that everyone's going to get to go experience if we can go.
And in addition to the competitions, there's student workshops, there's a variety of cultural experiences in agriculture, and over 70,000 students attend from every single state in our country. It's truly an incredible experience. I had the chance to go last year, and it was great.
It's labeled as an agricultural opportunity, but it's truly an academic opportunity with the amount of leadership workshops available and guest speakers that anyone in attendance gets to listen to.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Come on up and say your name, please.
Hi. Hi, my name's Mary Young. And I'm her mother. Sorry, Carrie Young. First of all, we just want to say we're happy to be here, we're really happy to be back in Rhode Island. We were in Texas for a little while, and really happy to be back in the Narragansett school system. Okay, take it away.
I say that we should get more lunch, because basically, me and my friend, we're getting in the cafeteria, and after getting lunch, we sat down, and we only had five minutes. We weren't even done with our food, and everyone is just rushing out to recess. And after about like three more minutes after that, I think we're like pushed out and forced to be out of there. We have no time to eat, and everyone just wants to go play recess, so we don't want to eat.
All right. Thank you. I mean, I— she just sort of spoke for herself. I don't—I'm not sure what the solution is, but thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Come on up and say your name, please.
I have a similar concern. I have a daughter in the same grade as Mary. So, I have a fifth grader and an eighth grader. My fifth grader, who's new to the school, has come back with her lunches uneaten, and I asked her what the case was with that. She said she didn't have enough time. And so, I just—I kind of mentioned that to a committee member at soccer practice, or my husband did, and she verified that that—the timing is pretty minimal for that. So, I just wanted to bring that concern. I know that there's state requirements for class and recess, and there's a lot of challenges around that, so I'm interested to hear the superintendent's details on that, see if there's anything that can be moved around in order to make sure, like, I know other schools in the state have 20 to 25 minutes for lunch and are able to hit their minimum for recess. So, I just wanted to bring that concern on the behalf of my children. My eighth grader, I asked her how she eats her lunch. She says she eats it during recess. So, she gives up her recess in order to eat her lunch. So, I'm just wondering if there's other arrangements that can be made. I just wanted to thank you for everything you do for the school committee and for the schools, and thank you for letting me speak.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up and say your name, please.
Hi, my name is Mindy Kerr. I'm—I have an eighth-grade daughter in the middle school as of right now. She did go through fifth and sixth grade in the middle school, and yes, I do think there was an adjustment with the lunchtime and the recess time, and it was a painful time. However, with a little bit of time, she did learn to adjust, and I do not get lunches home that haven't been eaten anymore. We've learned to space out what she can take. She gets a snack in one of her first-period classes, and I don't feel it's an issue. I think it's a learning curve for them, and I think they need to learn it, because as you get older, that time gets shorter, no matter where you are. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up and say your name.
So, one, I just wanted to address everybody. I'm a certified exercise physiologist and a strength and conditioning coach by trade. I have two children, one in the fifth grade and one in the third grade. So, I'm a little bit disappointed that I have to be up here talking about this right now, because the schedule, you know, I think should be set and ready to go. I don't believe the children should adjust to a short lunch period. I think eating is an important part of their health and wellness, and therefore, you know, people get lunch at all plates and points and jobs. You know what? That's one of the problems of America, is that we're shortening individuals' free time, and they feel like they have to work and they have to do other things. So, I feel that the school system is placing test scores and educational things above their health and their wellness, and I think that's a little bit of a problem. And so, currently, the schedule states that their lunch is about 35 minutes. The Rhode Island Department of Labor requires individuals to work six hours to have 20 minutes of lunch or a break time, which they are not getting, as is right now. I don't know—the schedule of my daughter in fifth grade does not list passing time. It does not list anything along those lines. I don't know if she's going to be able to go to the bathroom. I don't know if she's going to be able to sit and do anything else. And so, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends 20 minutes dedicated for lunch. They also recommend 30 minutes, because they recommend being able to eat their food for 20 minutes and to get their food and sit down for the other 10 minutes. And then, they need 20 minutes of health and wellness. So, free play is important. About 2022, about 42% of the 6- to 11-year-olds meet the one hour of physical activity. So, that means about 60% of our kids are not getting enough physical activity. So, they need to get out there in the free play. With the cutting of physical education, they only have it two days a week, they aren't even getting their physical activity. So, nutrition, sleep, and exercise are extremely important, and I think those need to be focused on. We shouldn't be cutting any other programs. We should be extending the school day then or doing something else. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Come on up and say your name, please.
Amy Rodriguez, Narragansett. Good evening. So, all the district parents got this from the school system in the mail, and I agree with on the first page where it states, "In accordance with Child Internet Protection Act, filters internet content to prevent access to pornography and material that is otherwise inappropriate for minors. However, it is recognized that this filter alone or any other is no guarantee that users will not be able to access internet resources which are profane, offensive, obscene, or otherwise objectionable. Students should report accidental access." And anyway, you get the picture. That's very good. I agree with that. We should protect our children from inappropriate materials in school. They're there to learn how to read, write, and solve for X, not about things that they are not mentally capable of dealing with. So, then, we go to the last page, and at the very bottom, we talk about the library use contract, which states, "We recognize that it is neither possible nor desirable for the Narragansett school system in each district libraries— school's library media center to restrict access to any material that a family may determine to be controversial. This will not hold the system responsible for materials acquired in the library. As a parent guardian, I accept responsibility for informing my child that it has—it is his or her responsibility to properly care for and choose books that are appropriate both in reading level and subject matter." Now, it is not a five-year-old's job. This goes out K through 12. A five-year-old's job to curate the materials that are found in a library. So, we're protecting the children on the computer. Why not use those same filters as far as what goes on in the library? There's no possible way a child that is in the elementary school, middle school, to know every single book in that library that has sexual content that is far beyond their understanding in years, nor is it the parent's job to know every single book. We know that there are some. I would ask that this district uses the same filter in guidance and preventions in the library that it does on the computers to protect our children. So, that is all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Come on up and say your name, please.
Hi, my name's Chantel Murray. I actually sent everybody an email out today. I don't know if everybody received it or not. There is—in Peter Cummings, he stated—I'm sorry, I have to look at my phone, because I had a stroke recently, so my memory's just not all there. But he stated in the Commissioner's 2016 advisory option that middle school, because it— fifth and sixth grade is in your middle school, that we really shouldn't have to deal with the recess for 20 minutes. That's untrue, because you're state-mandated to do that. You're state-mandated by statute 1622 point dash 4.2, I'm sorry. This is a statute that you can't— your policy does not go over a state statute. So, I understand what you're trying to do. You don't have enough time in the school time for everything, but you can't take this away from the kids, because like another parent stated, their children are throwing lunches away. My son is in fifth grade. He threw his lunch away plenty of times last week, because he wanted to go out and play with his friends. I understand that's his fault for throwing his lunch away, but we need to worry about our children with nutrition, because if they're not getting enough brain food and everything going, they're not going to be able to go through the school day, and that's not fair to our teachers. I just—I don't see how a policy can override a state law. And like, I stated everything in my email. So, I hope you can all see that and understand what's really, really the issue and go from there. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Hearing none, we're going to close open forum, and our next item is oral reports. And this is our welcome to our student liaison, and I'm going to have Dr. Cummings do that welcome.
Great. I will just, you know, do a quick introduction, and I know Marco has a report to give as well. And so, first of all, welcome to Marco Campobiano. He is a stellar senior at Narragansett High School. He is, you know, very— He is, you know, very actively involved in lots of school events. And so Marco applied to be on the school committee liaison, went through a rigorous interview process, was a shining star throughout that process. And so through that process was appointed. Many thanks to Diane for being a part of that process and to Mr. Fiori and Connor McCloskey, our assistant principal, for kind of working through those pieces. And so, welcome to Marco. We look forward to everything that you have to say. And I want to give you an opportunity to give your report tonight.
Just thank you guys so much for giving me this opportunity. I'm really excited to be sitting up here, first of all. So really just about why I wanted this. I mean, I've always had a love for history and government, and that's what really drove me to seek this opportunity. So I'm really looking forward to getting to work with all of you, representing the student body, and just providing my input. So this first report wasn't really too long. Students are just getting back into the swing of things at school, including our fall sports teams. They're up and running. And it's just great to see a large number of kids involved at the high school. So seniors, myself, actually, we kicked off the year with our Senior Sunrise at the Town Beach during the first week of school. This was a great way to start the year. I've heard from many seniors that they're excited about the many events that we're going to have this year. I'm excited to go into these and supporting them as well. Next week, actually, big week next week, one of my favorites of the year is Spirit Week, which is coming a little bit earlier than usual this year. Seniors have chosen a senior sharks theme for their T-shirt and foyer display. So we really thought that would fit the area really well, and we're really excited about that. Spirit Week will begin this Friday, actually tomorrow, with the homecoming games this year. We have all different games instead of just one football game that we're really excited to watch and support. So we're looking forward to just a really fun week of school spirit overall. And seniors, still seniors, are starting to begin their senior projects. We've just begun finding our mentors, writing our proposals, and going through that process. I'm really excited to start working on this, on my project, and I know many other seniors are as well. I mean, I just think this project is such an amazing opportunity to work with people in the community and mentors, and just something we're passionate about. One big change this year, and I know it's definitely a relief for me, is that a senior research paper is no longer a part of the senior project. And this is now a literary analysis research paper in English class. Many seniors, including myself, we just feel this is such a big relief, seeing how we're going through Common App and Common Applications and how this is, that's such a big priority for the future. And last thing, the high school is using a new digital pass system called Smart Pass for the first time. Myself and my peers are still undecided on how we feel about it just because it's the beginning of the year. We're just getting back into the swing of things. So, you know, it's definitely different, but I think it's just something we all have to get used to. So we've had a great start so far, and we're just thankful for Mr. Fiori and the high school staff for their support. And I'm really excited for a great year.
Awesome. So a warm welcome, and I love the enthusiasm. I think that's great. I'm super excited. My only question is, what is the Senior Sunrise? I don't know what that is.
So I think two weeks ago on Saturday morning, we, I believe it was 5:30 we had to be there. And we all just kind of gathered, had some breakfast. And it was just a beautiful morning to kick off the year, watching the sunrise at the Town Beach. And I know other classes have done this in the past, so we wanted to continue it. And I know at the end of the year, we'll end with the Senior Sunset as well. So for this town, we just thought it was perfect.
I just want to extend a warm welcome as well. You know, Maya led us off, and to have a transition into Year Two here with a wonderful candidate as a student liaison here, you know, I think it speaks volumes to the direction of this town. I thought you did an amazing job for your first time. This can be very scary for some people doing it for the first time, and I thought you presented really well to everyone. I couldn't agree more with everything in the report. It's really wonderful to see how active, how involved everything is at the high school. I remember Spirit Week very well. Really happy to see that that tradition is continuing. And, you know, going into your senior year, it's going to go by in a blink of an eye. And, you know, the memories that you make here are going to stick with you for a lifetime. You know, I certainly haven't forgotten that myself. And really appreciate you taking the initiative to share that energy with us. It's 7:40 at night, and you're here as if it's 5:30 in the morning. So I really appreciate you bringing that energy and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is school reports. And we're going to start with the elementary school and work our way up. So elementary school.
So, welcome, Marco. Mrs. Dander and I have such fond memories of you at our elementary school, and we're so proud of you. So congratulations. So we have started our school year in a great, great way. Kids are all settled in, buses are all settled in. It's just been a great opening. Our little preschoolers are there with their backpacks bigger than them, leading the way every morning. It's just such a sight to see. It really is, these little tiny babies coming in. We are just wrapping up our five-out-of-six back-to-school nights. We do have individual back-to-school nights at the Narragansett Elementary School because it gives the parents a chance to actually come into the school, hear from me a little bit, but most importantly, be able to go into their children's classrooms, meet the teacher, hear from the teacher, hear about what the specific nuances of that grade curriculum and just grade events are. And we've had such great turnouts for each individual night, and it's something that we feel really strongly about. It's just a nice way to welcome parents and families back to our school. So we have one more to go, and it's been great. We survived Picture Day today. It's another amazing feat, trying to get three-year-olds to sit still for a camera. But we did do it today, and it was fun. Look forward to seeing the photographs. We have a couple PTO events coming up. Our PTO general meeting is going to be September 24 at the Bike Stop Cafe at 7:00 PM. And our PTO is setting up for Sundays on Sunday on the 29th. They're always looking for volunteers and scoopers and all those fun things. I know several of you have come to that in the past, so you're more than welcome to join us on that day. And we have started, last year we started a morning offering of morning movement, something that our PE teachers, we were able to accommodate in their schedule. And they open the doors an hour, about 40 minutes early, and have the kids come in and do morning movement. We've expanded it to four mornings a week, which is great. We've also started to offer an art offering for two mornings a week with our art teacher, sunrise, I think she's calling it sunrise sketching. And the first round will be for third and fourth graders. And as the year goes on, she'll be offering about every six to eight weeks, another group. So it might eventually move to second and third graders and first and second graders. So we're just trying to open up some opportunities for people. And Vanessa, our technology coach, is going to do a coding class, and it's going to start with second grade this year. And then, once again, she'll start adding other grades on as well. But we're trying to offer some different opportunities for kids to start their day. And our PTO will also be offering afternoon enrichment classes as well. And that will be coming out after the sports, the fall sports, so we can have more kids engage in our enrichment classes. And I think that's all I have for you.
Do you have a staff member that was not, a new staff member? Are they still here?
Stephanie Caldwell did make it. She's another one of our teaching assistants.
Can she just come up? And then just the introduction that you would have done?
Sure. And Stephanie joined us. She's actually a parent who has a child in our school. And when she first came to Narragansett, she said, "I really want to be a teaching assistant." And we did have some openings this year, and she applied, and she has joined our preschool program. So I think she's had a fun time starting. And we're very happy to have Stephanie join us at Narragansett Elementary School. Thanks for reminding us.
Welcome and thank you for reminding us. And any questions from the school committee for the elementary school? Diane?
Yeah, just a quick question, Lisa. It may be too early to know, but how has the attendance been on the morning movement?
They haven't started yet. Our registration is starting tonight. And last year, it was amazing. I mean, we had waiting lists, and we got as many kids in as possible. So we have, we hold, I think it's about 40 kids can come at a time because we have two teachers hosting it. So now that it was two mornings a week, now we're opening up to four mornings a week, so we can get as many kids in as possible.
That's great.
I just had a quick question. I know there's a lot going on with the buses getting sorted out still. My kids miss the bus because it's coming like 25 minutes early. But I was just wondering, if it's coming so early, do you guys have buses idling right now? And for how long?
Not very long, no.
Okay. Maybe it's more of an issue at the middle school.
Yeah, no, it's been pretty much, usually for us, it's more the adjustment on the afternoon end is getting everybody loaded. They're really not waiting that long before I open the doors at 8:55. I haven't timed it, but I can take a look tomorrow.
Are they outside in the fresh air, or are they on the bus?
They're waiting on the bus because we don't have, they don't come off the bus because we don't have enough people to cover.
Is there a certain amount of, like, time, like five minutes, 10 minutes, that they idle?
They're not idling. The buses are turned off when they're in the circles.
Oh, okay. All right, I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no worries.
Any other questions for the elementary school? Thank you. On to Pier Middle School.
Congratulations, Marco. We're really thrilled to see you up there. Mr. Kay and I have fond memories of you being at the middle school, so we're so excited to see you up there representing Narragansett High School and the district as a student representative. So again, congratulations. So as far as the first few weeks at Pier, they've been a great success. It's wonderful to see both staff and students back in the building. And I'm thrilled to witness the learning taking place during classroom visits. Many teachers are incorporating the thinking classroom techniques into their daily lessons, leading to increased student engagement in mathematics, ELA, science, social studies, and Unified Arts. The cross-country and soccer seasons are in full swing with our student athletes putting in dedicated effort after school to prepare for competition. We also have a variety of after-school activities on the horizon, including intermurals, interest groups like Art Club, Chess Club, Robotics, and Homework Club, which will provide students with ample opportunity to connect with peers and stay involved. We encourage our parents to stay updated through our various communication channels, such as our Parent Bulletin on Power School, school emails, the district-wide monthly newsletter, and district website, where you can find the latest and greatest all about peer school. So those are great avenues to look at. Our late bus is up and running with requests already being received, believe it or not, in like the third full week of school. This service runs Monday through Thursday, and students do need to sign up 24 hours in advance, but they are adhering to the rule pretty well. In our last parent letter, MPS Student Services and Admin introduced a Who to Call When guide. This resource helps parents understand the roles of different staff members and departments within our school, making it easier to direct questions or concerns to the appropriate person. We also hosted our annual open house on September 12 from 6:30 to 8:00. This allowed parents to visit core classrooms with a modified student schedule and hear from our Unified Arts teachers during two seminars that were tailored to fifth and sixth grade parents and seventh and eighth grade parents. I wanted to highlight a couple of upcoming events that we're hosting here at Pier. So Narragansett Schools is going to be hosting their second BCI clinic on September 25 from 4:00 to 6:00 in our main office. Derek DiPaolo, who's our Transportation Director, will act as notary. And we will both be collecting information necessary so that you can get a BCI through the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office, which is required for volunteering in our district. It's valid for one year, and we hope that we can offer this service again in January. Also, we're switching it up with PTO a little bit and having our first meeting on September 26 at the Narragansett Town Library in one of their new rooms. So we hope that we have some parent turnout. We are offering desserts and coffee in the evening, so hopefully you will be there to join us for PTO. And last but not least, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to Dr. Cummings, to the committee, and to the Narragansett Pier School community for welcoming me into the role of principal. I'm truly thankful for this opportunity and excited to lead Narragansett Pier School in the coming years.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the Pier School? All right, thank you so much. All right, and we are on to the high school.
Good evening, again. Marco, this time I get to publicly congratulate you. Just to add on to Dr. Cummings' profile, this is a young man of the utmost integrity and initiative. He consistently seeks me out. We have conversations. It could be for clarification. It could be to have conversations. It could be to share ideas. So when Marco talks about passion, he's actually being very humble. This is passion times 100. You'll find no student that has more passion for NHS than Marco. And I know he's going to do a great job. So congratulations. Lot going on at the high school. We've begun our NIASC accreditation process. So we've gone through the training process with NIASC. We've done a lot of research, actually, already. We did some in the PD days prior to school starting and on the 10th. So we're actually moving very quickly through the process, which is great. The parent survey has been out there. The student survey is completed. The staff survey has been completed. So we're working with our NIASC liaison pretty closely in that process. We've really stretched our minds and gotten very creative in terms of our building thinking classrooms, district initiative, and something that we're really trying to expand beyond the math department, something that our math department did last year. And we're trying to expand it to other departments as well. It's been very well received. It certainly increases student engagement, and we're looking forward to continuing and working in that process. We just recently had some PD on that yesterday and today, and we're excited to continue and expand on that. You were introduced to Marisol Kinnipur before, and she's leading the World Language Department's charge in planning Hispanic Heritage Month, which we have some programs coming up, so that's going to be exciting. You also saw the Ag Department, or at least a couple members of the Ag Department before. And the program's been very busy, actually. They've already gotten out there. They had already a field trip this particular week, yesterday as a matter of fact, and planning for other shows, the Big E. They mentioned going to Indianapolis and other competitions as well. So they're actually doing great work already. The grade levels are preparing for homecoming, and Spirit Week came a lot quicker this year than we probably would have liked, but always tied to certain games and moving games with the shortage of officials and things like that have gotten more difficult. One thing we tried to do this year was really build on the school spirit. So traditionally, homecoming has always been about football. That's historic. And we have so many athletes, and everybody likes to kind of get in on it. So this year, we're having Homecoming Weekend. So all the varsity teams get a home game. It starts tomorrow. We have volleyball and tennis tomorrow. Football is Friday. Boys and girls soccer are Saturday. So we have a whole weekend of events, all home games. Everybody gets to participate and share in the spirit, watch each other's games, and cheer each other on. Saturday night is the dance. Sunday morning is the Powderpuff Game. And then next week is Spirit Week. So it's going to be a big week. I got my no-dose pills already. Senior project changes. Marco alluded to a couple changes that are coming up. So we did try to listen to the students, and Maya was certainly a champion of this last year in gathering some data for us as well. And one thing that they really talked about was sort of being inundated at the start of the year. So we tried to compartmentalize the tasks for them and still keep the meaning behind everything. And we found that the research paper that they were doing, which was tied to the project, started to get a little bit more loosely tied and a little bit more removed. started to get a little bit more loosely tied and a little bit more removed. And just in discussions with the students, with the parents, with the staff, we felt that they would be much more prepared to move beyond high school if they did a literary analysis paper in the English classes instead of trying to find some roundabout way to attach it to a senior project. So we have all the aspects of the senior project and the benefits, and we're going to add on to that as well with the literary analysis paper. Marco also mentioned Smart Pass, which is a digital smart pass system. The middle school started this last year in the middle of the year, I believe, in January. And, you know, we kind of held out for this year just so that we could sort of learn a little bit more and have a little more confidence in what we were doing with it. And it allows us to gain some more data, valuable data, that we were just actually looking at it today. So I think it's going to help us. The halls seem to be a lot more organized as well. So I'm not sure from the student perspective what the answer is going to be, but from a teacher perspective, it's definitely a plus. Some other events, we had our Mariner Family Monday already on the 9th, something that we did gain some data as well about, as I mentioned last year, that we would, talking to students and parents and staff. And it seemed to be something that everybody wanted to continue, and they liked the benefits of that. So we're going to continue that this year. We've placed the date strategically on the calendar, you know, to give them, you know, certain breaks. And it's one a month still. We had Senior Parent Night earlier tonight, so I was able to kind of kick that off before coming here. Tomorrow, we have Back to School Night. Next Tuesday is Junior Parent Night. Next Thursday is Meet the Counselor Night for our 9th and 10th grade parents. So we are certainly hitting the ground running and moving along. Lot to look forward to.
Well, rest up there. That's quite a week. Holy cow. Any questions for the high school, Diane?
Yeah, Mr. Fiori, on the new literary analysis research paper, do the students choose their book, or is there a list that they choose from, or how is that going to be conducted?
The teachers are actually crafting it because they're going to work with some of the authors that they've already, they have in the curriculum already. So we haven't quite finalized exactly how they're going to do that. They're going to be using an outside source in addition to a book that they read in class. If it's, they're going to have options, though. We definitely want something where the students are going to have options because it's important to learn about the process. It's important to have the literature piece. You know, it's one of the biggest pieces. I know I sound like a former English teacher, sorry about that, but, you know, having that in their pocket when they move on is just so important. And it's not just for our, you know, students that are going on to higher education, you know. It's preparing them to be able to speak when they go on an interview and address people in public to work on jobs and customer service type of situations. So there's a lot there that they can glean from that whole process. So when I have some, an actual final project, I will certainly share that.
I am going to miss reading the senior research papers, though.
There's going to be, we expanded the reflection piece of it, so it has some of the same elements of what they were doing in tying, you know, their research, which they still have to do to complete the project, and the actual project. So they're going to have components of it. It's just not going to be quite in paper format. It's going to be in a reflection. So there will be something there that I think, you know, we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Actually, Diane stole my, still one of my two questions was, one, would the paper be available for review during the senior project review in May? And it sounds like it's been incorporated into the reflection piece, so that's great to hear. You know, that was my first time being a senior project judge last time. I have to agree. I was really impressed, and I'm going to miss that part of it, but it sounds like it's going to be incorporated in another way, and I look forward to seeing how that rolls out. My only suggestion, and not to add more to your already extremely busy schedule, the same Spirit Weekend that's going on for the fall sports, maybe also do something similar if you're not already doing for winter and spring sports as well. I don't know what that looks like, but you seem to have a lot of great ideas, and I'm sure you might come up with something.
I'll get to work.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the high school? All right, thank you very much. Okay, Student Services.
I will join Marco in your congratulations and already loving your enthusiasm and so excited at what you'll bring to the committee and your input. So I wanted to take a moment and just celebrate the opportunities that Jill and I had over our August and September professional learning opportunities. I was able to speak to each faculty on really making sure that we're using student engagement opportunities to involve all students and give all students opportunities to learn and tying that into our building thinking classroom framework. We were also able to spend some devoted time with just our special educators throughout the district to really talk about how are we setting goals and how are we progress monitoring our students, and how are we involving students in monitoring their progress and that goal setting? And so that was really key to the work that we did. Jill also was given an opportunity to meet with all of our paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and bus monitors, to use safety care and to talk about some de-escalation strategies with them and do some problem solving to prepare them for the new school year. In an additional, Jill worked with both our elementary school and our middle school to talk about our multiple tiers of systems of support in the interventions that we're providing so that all students, again, are having access to our curriculum and getting the support that they need. I wanted to follow up with you. Last year, around this time in the fall, I shared with you that Narragansett was having their state visit for special education, which meant that they go through all of these different standards, they pull random files, they look at the services we are provided, and then they come back. They've already come back to do our follow-up visit, and we're asked to create a binder that has evidence of how we're working towards each of the standards. And they were so excited. We received a very complimentary letter back after the visit, and they've asked if they can use our binder as a model as they work with other districts. And so we're excited about that and the work that we're doing. Jill wanted me to share that they had a very successful meet and greet for parents and children of our preschool program. We have six classrooms. There are 85 students enrolled. We have a max capacity at 90, but we always leave a few seats because we have children that turn three throughout the year, or we have children that move into our district who have an IEP. So we have to maintain a few seats, so we're prepared for that enrollment. And then I'm really excited to share that the Narragansett Special Education Action Committee, we've been talking about this for years, and we have such a dedicated, small group of parents who are, have continued to work with Jill and I, and they're ready for their kickoff, which will be October 9th. We're working very closely with Lauren Rogirio to make sure it's in our newsletter and it goes out on our social media and through all different ways for parents to know. It's from 6:00 to 7:30. It will be at the middle school library. But we've also had these key parents who have joined us for open houses, and they've been inviting families during the open house and talking about it. So I look forward to very soon coming back to you with them and being able to give our Board of Officers to you and their bylaws for your approval, because that's part of your role as a school committee, and really to see that group get up and running this year with our support. And finally, I'll just share, if you're, it sounds like there's already a very busy weekend in Narragansett, but if you're looking for something to do on Saturday night, Sarah Dully, our Teacher of the Year, and myself, I'll get to do it with her because of the award I recently won. But educators throughout the state are going to be acknowledged through an educator water fire, so it's kind of a fun opportunity to see educators throughout this state and to celebrate a water fire on Saturday. Thank you.
And as a reminder, Dr. Denton was Special Education Director of the Year for Rhode Island, so that is why she's being honored along with Sarah.
I really shared it just in case you didn't know about Water Fire.
We appreciate that. Any questions from the committee for Dr. Denton?
So not a question for me, but just a comment, like, congratulations, as Pete just said, you know, to be recognized at the state level as a special services director is impressive. And that comes through in your work every day with the example of, you know, the site visit, and you and your team that you work with were so well-prepared that now your preparation is an exemplar for other districts. So that just, you know, speaks to your work, but that's really impressive that they came and were so impressed by the work that you're doing, but also how you documented it, that here is a, here's an exemplar model for other districts to look at. So congratulations on that. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are moving on to school committee reports, very early in the year, but does any school committee member have a school committee, subcommittee report to give? Can't imagine we do, we're in like day 14 of school here, so. Okay, so we're going to move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cummings.
Great, thank you, Tammy. So before I jump into the grade 5, 6 lunch requests that you all asked me to speak about, I do want to just take a moment and acknowledge all the people that got us ready for opening the school year. And so our maintenance and custodial crew did an amazing job this year getting our schools ready. The schools are absolutely beautiful. Steve Will probably had our next meeting come and give an overview of some of the projects that were completed, but they had a lot of work to do. They got it done in a timely way and really expertly, and the schools look absolutely great. Likewise, Julio and the tech crew did an amazing job making sure everything was ready. They replaced wireless access all over all the schools. They made sure all the computers are ready to go. And again, you know, one of the things for both maintenance and for tech is that if you're really not noticing it, it means that everything went really well, right? And they both did an amazing job of making sure everything was seamless. And finally, I want to thank Gail and our curriculum crew for organizing our professional learning days before school opened. They did an amazing job. So one of the things that the committee asked me to talk about tonight is the grade 5, 6 schedule, so I'm going to ask Emily to come up to the podium in case there's any questions. So I'll do a quick overview. Let me first by, start by saying, acknowledging, you know, totally respect and hear the concerns about lunch. So my goal tonight is to provide some clarity around what the schedule looks like tonight and then offer some suggestions about what some possible steps might be.
Pause for one second. Is there a question?
Yes. On the agenda, it just says that we're talking about 5th and 6th grade recess times, that we weren't going to be talking specifically about the schedule. I was just confused. Correspondence earlier.
It's the superintendent's report, and you had questions about lunch and recess, so they're giving a presentation about lunch and recess. And then if any committee members have questions, you can ask throughout, or you can hold your questions.
So I guess I'm just looking for clarification so we can ask questions about lunch, recess, and the schedule. Correct?
You can ask Pete whatever questions you want, your school committee member.
Okay.
So just to give an overview, right, and so we can understand the framework. So the grades 5 and 6 schedule currently is a three-day rotating special schedule, so an A, B, and C day, and we are at an A, B, and C day, grades 5 through 12. So new last year, we included band and choir in the school day. And that was a particular request of our arts staff, of our band and choir teachers, because they were really having some challenges around getting students to be involved in art, I'm sorry, in choir and in band, because it was before and after school. So we really saw that as an equity issue because some students could not get to and were not able to access music before and after school. So we did want to put that within the school day. So right now, we have a 35-minute combined lunch and recess, and that runs from 11:13 to 11:48. Students have some choice on how to split that. And so, for example, some students eat a little bit quicker and then go out for a longer recess. Some students eat a little bit longer and go out for a shorter recess. And that is true of grades 5 and 6. And it is shorter than what they had in elementary school. So in elementary school, they had a 20-minute lunch, defined only lunch, and then a 20-minute recess, defined only recess. And so this is a combined lunch and recess. Students have options for band, choir, art, and computer science in one of their specials blocks, and then in their other specials blocks, they have PE, health, junior mariners, and world language. Students rotate teachers, and so that's a new thing for our students in grade 5, right? So whereas in grade 4, they're with only one teacher, in grade 5, they rotate amongst three teachers. So one of the things that was brought up in public comment, and, you know, I want to make really clear, is that we consulted with our attorneys just to be sure that we were in full compliance in our schedule with Department of Education and the Basic Education Plan around the schedule and around lunch and recess. And so in the school committee packet is a legal opinion from our school attorney that says that we are in full compliance with all the requirements from the Department of Education around lunch and recess. So one of the things that I think is helpful for the discussion to understand is just to understand what some of those requirements are, and then I think that guides the discussion of kind of what the next steps are. So we have a six-and-a-half-hour school day, right? So that's 390 total minutes. We are required by ride of those 390 minutes to have a minimum of 330 instructional minutes per day, so that's five and a half hours per day. In this block, we have three, essentially three 85-minute instructional blocks. One of them is split, but there's three kind of 85-minute blocks, give or take. The reason for that is that the ELA curriculum that we use, CKLA, requires around 90 minutes, 85 to 90 minutes per day in order to be effective. So that's a combination of reading and writing. And so if you think about how the pieces go together, right, there are three 85-minute blocks because there are three classes, and each one of them requires a, you know, 85 to 90-minute block in order to have their ELA. What we're also required to have is PE and health must average 100 minutes a week. So we average 132.5 minutes for that at Narragansett Peer School. Right now, art, music, and specials have about a 50-minute period. And again, as I referred to earlier, that was really a request of our art and music teachers to start to include that during the school day for equity issues. So when you kind of put all those things together, right, so the instructional blocks plus the art plus the PE, that leaves roughly 35 minutes for lunch and recess. Gets to us roughly 389 minutes per day, and that extra minute is used at the end of the school day because, you know, they are coming, they're packing themselves up and getting ready to go out to the bus and whatnot. So I think, you know, the essential question is, and again, I say that this with lots of respect for the concerns, is to extend lunch and recess, we have to shorten something else or extend the school day. And that's the essential question, okay, is, does the, does the school community want to, is that what is important and want to extend lunch and recess? And the next question for that is, if we do extend lunch and recess, what is it that gets shortened? Okay? And there are lots of feelings and lots of arguments, right? And for each one of the areas I described, right? So there's lots of passion around learning to read and write. There's lots of passion around our science curriculum. There's lots of passion around our math curriculum. There's lots of passion around music and art. And so just for sake of argument, cutting five minutes a day from one of the blocks equals about 15 hours of instruction over a school year. And so just to give you a view of what happens in other districts, okay? So we are at 35 minutes for grades 5 and 6. It does get shorter for grades 7 and 8, although they do have recess. Cherahoe, and I only, as a side note, I only did grades 5 through 8 schools within Rhode Island, because I was comparing kind of apples to apples, so to speak. So Cherahoe has a longer school day than we do, so they have a 6-hour and 45-minute school day. They have a 30-minute lunch and recess combined. Jamestown, again, also has a longer school day than we do. They have a 40-minute lunch and recess for grades 5 and 6 and a 30-minute for grades 7 and 8. Westerly has a 45-minute lunch and recess, but their instructional blocks are a lot shorter than ours are. They do meet the 5 hours and 30 minutes requirement of instruction. They do meet the five hours and 30 minutes requirement of instruction. We do go over that minimum requirement of instructional time. And then Tiverton, which is the last one of grades five through eight, actually does not have recess. They just have lunch, and that is 25 minutes. So one of the things that I would suggest to the community and to the committee is that, you know, we certainly have a school improvement team for a reason. And that school improvement team has representatives of parents, it has representatives of teachers, it has representatives of the school administration, and their charge is to tackle issues like this, to think about what is the push and pull and the right balance in order to make adjustments. And it is the prerogative of the principal in kind of conjunction with the school improvement team to look at the data, to get input from the community, and to make adjustments as necessary. I don't think Ms. Chardier, or I, or really anyone, wants to have students who are not completing their lunch, right? At the same time, we want to make sure that we are appropriately balancing the academic and other needs within the school day with the time that we allow for lunch and recess. And it's always a balance, right? And so my suggestion to the committee, I appreciate the concern. I hope I can kind of clarify any misperceptions that are out there about this. But I really think that if it continues to be a concern for the community, particularly for the parents in grades five and six, we're happy to address that concern, to take a look at it, to make adjustments as necessary. But I think we also want to be very clear that short of expanding a school day, making those adjustments means that we are making adjustments in other area in order to provide that opportunity. And if the community is welcoming those adjustments in order to make that change, you know, again, that is the prerogative of the school improvement team to do so.
Great. Thank you, Pete. Any questions or comments from the school committee?
Just one quick question, because I do know that, and first of all, wonderful presentation. You do a really good job at articulating your points and really appreciate the providing of the explanation from the lawyer. This is, I believe, everything in here is public record, so anyone who would like to read up for themselves the explanation from the lawyer regarding the interpretation of the law and how Narragansett is currently abiding by those state regulations. I also am empathetic to, you know, hearing from students, parents directly. Again, I don't think anyone up here wants any kids to not be able to eat or finish their lunch. It sounds like there are solutions on the table that can be considered. We do have a school improvement team who, you know, takes all of these things very seriously and would be more than happy, I'm sure, to look into this as well. My question is, if somebody were to come up and say, well, why not just make it just easy resolution, extend the school day 10 minutes? Can you just elaborate why it's not so easy just to do that? What kind of different layers are involved in regards to negotiations with the union and other, like, scheduling after-school programs? All of these things that need to be taken into consideration, why it's not so easy?
Sure. I think it's just as simple as you indicated, Alex, is that, you know, our teacher and support staff contracts are for a six-and-a-half-hour school day, and we do make the most of every minute that we have with them. We have great teachers and great support staff. They come early, they stay late, but contractually, we cannot kind of extend the school day without reopening the contracts. We are going into a contract year, and so, you know, that's certainly something that can be considered.
And then to reiterate, I know the option two was, you got to take away from some other areas, such as arts, music, areas that I don't think the committee as a whole would feel comfortable cutting, as we are very much, as I understand it, very supportive of all of those programs. And again, it's not so easy to just make these cuts and to or extend the school day that there are all of these different layers and different things that need to be taken into consideration. So again, thank you for sharing that feedback, and I highly encourage anyone in the public to read up for, on this interpretation from our lawyer yourselves to better understand how Narragansett is abiding by the state law and to please feel free to reach out to Pete with any questions or concerns.
And I think the other piece, and Emily can certainly talk about this a little bit, is, and, you know, some of our speakers tonight, you know, we certainly do want to be sure that we are helping our fifth graders in particular self-regulate to a point where if they are not eating lunch, you know, we do invite parents to let us know. Not only can we help create a structural issue, help solve a structural issue through a school improvement team, but there are also individual supports that we can give to students without kind of making them embarrassed or really making it a big deal in order to support students and saying, you know, it's okay to finish your lunch before you go to the playground. You know, for some students, they want to maximize their time outside. I totally understand that. On a beautiful day, I want to be outside as well, right? I'm sympathetic. And again, that's an issue for the school improvement team to balance and to weigh and to say, what is the pro and con of extending that time? And they could come to a decision where they decide to extend that time. And as I said before, that's well within their rights to do in cooperation with the principal. That's why we have those teams.
So during those lunches, we have some of our Unified Arts teachers that are in those cafeterias with those students, and we use that as an opportunity to make connections with our students in fifth and sixth grade as well as in seventh, eighth grade. And it's a great time for our Unified Arts teachers to like have those conversations. And, you know, oftentimes, it's, you know, it's, oh, slow down, buddy, you need to finish up, or this, that, and the other. But we are trying to give the students autonomy, so some voice and choice around how they split that time. So like Pete was saying, we do want to honor kids that do need more time to finish their lunch, or maybe they're moving into a more of a social type of feel for themselves, so they want to just sit and chat with their friends. We do, we're not rushing kids out. We do try to encourage them to take the last 10 minutes, since it's a 35-minute period in comparison to the 25 that seventh and eighth grade have, which also includes a little bit of recess as well. But we do include that 10 minutes, and we try to encourage them to get out and get the fresh air and this, that, and the other. So we are trying to find that balance as well, but totally open to using SIT to explore a little bit more.
So I have a couple of comments. So after listening to you, so you're not, so the law states right here that all children attending public schools that have elementary grades, kindergarten through six, that would include the peer school. You have fifth and sixth grade in there.
Is the peer school an elementary school or a middle school?
The peer school is a middle school.
Thank you.
But I'm stating law. It says Rhode Island General Law 1622-4.2 states that all children attending public schools that have elementary grades, kindergarten through six, shall receive in those schools at least 20 minutes consecutive of supervised, safe, and unstructured free-play recess each day. If you're telling me that you're allowing kids to finish their lunch, and those kids aren't getting 20 minutes each day of recess, then we are not complying to law.
So here's what I'll say.
I'm also, excuse me, I am also looking at the schedule, and I see no passing time in there. So that lunch recess block, which changed from the beginning of the year, because what was published on Power School and in my child's schedule started with 11:19 to 11:44. Now, I'm curious how long that block is. I went and observed lunch. How much passing time? When are they leaving? Period three. How much passing time does it take? I was told by my child, it takes three minutes of passing time. I don't see that in the schedule. So if I'm minus three minutes from that, if that is correct, that means they're getting to lunch/recess at 11:16, and that there's also passing time from 11:45 to 11:48. That makes that block 29 minutes. So if we abide by the state law, Rhode Island General Law 1622-4.2, that means each fifth and sixth grade child gets nine minutes to stand in line, put their coat in if they don't already have their lunch, sit and eat, discard their trash and compost, and get out to recess. By state law, labor law, in which I made a call to RIDE yesterday and asked, what guideline should you go by? They said federal law. Is that any working period of time? And this is where they apply to schools. Six hours or more, you should have a 20-minute uninterrupted lunch.
So here's what I'll say. I'm not a lawyer, not a lawyer, not the Commissioner of Education. We paid a lawyer to interpret the law. I am not a lawyer. I'm going to go by what the lawyer says. Jen, I know you think the lawyer is wrong, but I'm not a lawyer. I'm going to go with what we like paid the lawyer to do.
No.
So I would say if you want to get something from the commissioner, ask RIDE to have the commissioner do an updated advisory opinion, like, that's great.
I'm going to tell you, it has nothing to do with whether I think a lawyer is wrong. First of all, this is an opinion on an opinion from an old commissioner, Wagner, back in 2016, about one school, Tiverton, that is a five through eight, okay? He's putting an opinion upon another opinion. An opinion and a policy is totally different from state law. State and federal laws, in this point, trump things, and they're there for children's safety, for our safety. And what I'm trying to get at is what I observed last Friday, where kids not eating, and I can tell you, and it shouldn't matter, because we're up here for every child, and there are some children that that meal is the one meal that they get a day, because they can't afford a meal any other time of the day. So I have a hard time going to sleep at night, knowing that there are children that are not getting anywhere close to the nutrition that they need. I appreciate everybody being here. This is an important subject, but I can't go to sleep at night just for a lawyer's opinion. I know what I saw. I know what the kids are saying. I know that they're hungry. We live in 2024. We can do something. All of those fifth-grade teachers are elementary certed. If they were in the elementary school, they would be moving time around differently, because they wouldn't have to be in the block schedule shared with the high school. However, they can still move time around in order to give the kids 20 minutes federal law of six hours of work and 25 minutes uninterrupted play. How you're going to figure that out, I'm sure you're going to have to look at things, but I know it's doable. I know it's doable. The other thing I do want to state is that in the contract, the teacher's contract for Narragansett, and excuse me, I do need to look at my phone, because I took a picture of it, because I knew I would lose paper. You guys all know that I lose everything that I have in paper. It says lunch. Teachers shall have a lunch period equal to that of their students, but in no case less than 20 minutes, 20 uninterrupted minutes. I think we need to sit on that for a minute.
So teachers do receive the same lunch period, they're at lunch when their student is at lunch?
They're getting to eat for 20 interrupted minutes.
Again, right?
Those are my comments.
Can I go next, Pete?
Yes.
Okay. So here's what I'll say. One of the things I found helpful in the letter from the lawyer, again, not, so his, one of his closing remarks were, the school committee's role is like at the macro level. We're budget, we're policy, macro level, we approve a school calendar. At the granular level is the principal. I have full confidence in you, Emily, and the dean, like, that's why we hired you. I know that you're going to listen to input from parents, from teachers, from kids, from school committee members. If you have to make some adjustments, I have full confidence that you will. Like, I would never in a thousand years say about this with passing time and this and that. That's granular. Like, that's your job as principal. And if people are not happy with something, they'll let you know, and you will make a change if you want, and you'll bring it to SIT. You'll do what you want, because you're the principal. Like, this is the granular level. This is your job. It's not my job to micromanage you. I am at the, I'm in the balcony here. I'm at the macro level. It's my job to approve the school calendar. When's the first day of school? The last day of school? PD days, all that stuff. This is your job. I trust you. That's why we hired you. So that's my comments. Sorry, Pete, I interrupted you.
No problem at all. And again, you know, I do just want to emphasize, I understand that Ms. Armstrong has a different perspective, but from the perspective of when we design the schedule, it is a 35-minute combined lunch and recess. And so, again, we do believe that for most kids, that works for them, right? But again, we are very sympathetic to the point of view of parents that have reached out and contacted us, and thus, it is on the agenda, or when Emily built it, the next agenda for the school improvement team. They will happily examine that, get input, look at best practice, look at national best practice, and if adjustments are necessary, they will make those adjustments.
I appreciate the opportunity to go ahead and review this with my SIT team. It's wonderful work, and I'm excited to get into the weeds with it. You know, one of the strengths that we have in the front office is that we do value that student voice. I can attest that Mr. Candace will often interview the kids about intermurals and this, that, and the other. So I feel confident that we can get the student voice as well as the parent voice. Last year, when I was interim, you know, we did begin the SIT process, and we were very purposeful on including community members as well as parents on our SIT team. So it's going to be really important for those voices to be there, and, you know, I would welcome any parent that would like to serve on that committee. Just recognize, lunch is not the only thing that we do in SIT, so we're looking at a lot of different things. As a SIT committee, we are looking at, we have four goals, one around common task work that we're doing at the peer school, another with our test scores, voice and choice, which is where this probably would fall, and then we're looking at our social, emotional goal and our learning there. So I do appreciate the opportunity to explore this a little bit further.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
I do have one more question. So how quickly can we make a change?
So I believe that once we get the SIT committee together, we need to formulate a process that would involve gathering some information from parents and students across the school, because, you know, our seventh and eighth graders had a very different experience than the current fifth and sixth grade with their lunch. So it's going to be really valuable to gather that data, and then we would probably need to have a subcommittee meeting in between, so those individuals that would have to have voice and choice around that.
So what I would say is this, and, you know, again, Emily works with that committee really well. I think it's going to be up to the school improvement team committee how quickly they want to move on it, right? And again, this is one of the things where that team can choose to make a very rapid change. I think what I hear Emily describing is making sure that they gather the right data and get the input from all affected stakeholders, which I know is something that the school committee believes in, right? And so it could be very fast. I think that, again, if this remains, you know, it does remain a high priority to make sure that all students are getting the time that they need to eat. And looking at best practice, I've already reached out to the Rhode Island Health and Wellness Coalition. Karen Weatherall, she's really an expert on this and can help us learn best practices nationally. And, but I do think the school improvement team can move pretty rapidly, should they wish to do so, right? But again, that is up to that team and not to be kind of mandated from the superintendent, for example.
Where should parents go to find out how this is moving along?
That's a great question. So we're going to be having our first SIT team meeting on the 15th of October. One of my mailings will invite parents if they would One of my mailings will invite parents if they would like to volunteer for that time. So based on the feedback from the community, we can do an update after that SIT meeting and kind of like come up with a timeline of the steps that we need to have in place and then maybe have a decision date after that, but it's going to be based on that SIT meeting.
Well, and there's also a monthly principals report that you give, too.
Absolutely.
So sometimes you come in person, sometimes we have it in written form. You can certainly give whatever updates in your principals report.
That's a great suggestion.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? All right, well, thank you very much. And that's not a voting item. That was a superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings, do you have anything else in your superintendent's report before we go on to consent agenda?
Uh, no, thank you so much.
Okay. All right, so moving on to consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve consent agenda items CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto the budget report, Karen.
Good evening. The expenditures for the two months ended August 31st, 2024, total $2,975,560, and that's 8.07% of our budget. Our expenditures and encumbrances for the two months, total $27,875,608, and that's 75.58% of our budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. So we're on to our voting items, school committee, business item number one. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve the annual FFA National Convention trip to Indianapolis, Indiana, from October 21st through October 26, 2024?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So you heard from our students, I think they had, they could not stay this late, so that's why they spoke during open forum. So I appreciate the committee's patience in allowing, hearing them speak earlier. But as you heard before, it's an amazing trip for them. And so, you know, they do go every year. It is very well-supervised. They do some great fundraising for this. You know, any student that is eligible to go and wants to go is able to go. And we always like hearing about their gold medals and all the great things that they do when they come back. So I highly recommend this trip to the committee.
The level of details in the packet, do any school committee members have any questions for Pete?
No, this sounds like the usual trip they take, well-planned, well situated, and they usually have, they have a great time, so.
I was just curious, how many chaperones go?
How many chaperones go? Is it five? Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from any school committee members before we vote? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We are on to item number two about tuition rates. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent and the Director of Finance Administration to approve the proposed tuition rates for the 2024-2025 school year?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So these rates, this is something that the committee needs to prove every year. It's one of our policies. And so just a couple of things. So Karen calculates these, and if you have any specific questions about how it's calculated, you can certainly ask Karen. The purpose of these tuition rates are twofold. So one, should someone, there is a policy where we do accept students, should they wish to enroll as an individual student and have the parent individually pay tuition from out of district setting, and that's really typically done K through eight. We have very few students that do that. Sometimes that happens if, for example, a family knows they will be moving to Narragansett, and they want their child to start in the circuit in school a little bit early so they make friends, that type of thing. So we've had that. Or if they have moved and, for example, they want their child to remain in the school for a year or two, they sometimes would do that just for the continuity of education. Two, we do have a contract with Jamestown, right, where we calculate the tuition rate, and that is in there, and there's a very specific way that we calculate that Jamestown tuition rate. And so that is for our high school students who are not involved in CTE, who come from Jamestown. And so again, that is a very specific rate based on that contract. Three, students who enroll in a CTE program, that rate is calculated by the Rhode Island Department of Education. And so that rate is based on the sending district's budget. And so we do not set that rate, but Karen included that just so you have familiarity with it.
Thank you, Pete. Any other, any questions or comments from the school committee?
I just had a question. I noticed NPS, NHS, and Jamestown all had slight increases, but NES had a slight decrease. I'm just curious why.
Well, basically, when we switched NPS and NHS, and actually Jamestown, they were all pretty much the same, I believe that when the scheduling changed, we didn't do, have to, we had to increase some of our learning and our instructional costs to accommodate that change. As far as the elementary school, there's been some enrollment drops and some adjustments with teachers and moving from either the peer school or the high school based on where the students are moving. So that's why there's a difference between the elementary school being a reduction and the other two schools being increases.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And on to the last item for tonight, is there a motion to renew the superintendent's contract for the period of 2024 through 2027?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes 4-1. And before we close, I just want to say thank you to Pete for your leadership and your vision and your guidance and, you know, your communication skills, your interpersonal skills, your professionalism, and your vision to continually push our district forward. You know, the organizations that you're partnering with, the learning thinking classrooms, all of that work, pushing, pushing, pushing and stretching our staff and the leadership team that you guide and the new hires that you put through a very rigorous process. So I really appreciate and value your leadership, and I'm extremely excited to have you for another three years. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. I love being a part of this district. I'm honored to be here, and I appreciate the support of the committee, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? Okay, so, what time is it, Alex? Okay, is there a motion to, next meeting is October 16th here at 7 o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:40?
So moved.